Oh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to our June 23, 2023, Deco Bay Council meeting. Ken, would you call the board, please? Watson?
She's here.
Rec?
She's online.
I see her online. Soffer?
Here.
Short? Thank you, Councilor Rec. Olin?
Here.
Beasley?
Here.
Thank you. You got a point.
Thank you.
We do have a revised agenda. We were not able to get the notification for the public hearing out of Congress, so we have to like this until June 17. And any other changes to the agenda? Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of May 6th and then council table reports?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept them as presented? Oh, that motion? Is there movement seconded to accept the consent agenda? Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Even I have any guest presentations this evening? Commission reports, none on emergency harbor? Ken, are you here to reiterate?
Yep, I is.
Oh, wonderful.
It's a real good turnout at our last meeting.
Oh, great.
And the main discussion was the fuel. And we kind of came up with four maybe solutions, or at least maybe get a start on it. Of course, the card block came up. That's a everybody feels very firmly about the card block, but we got some hurdles for that with the DEQ and state fire marshal and some other things.
Yeah, a lot of issues with that.
Yeah, yeah. And we also discussed leasing it with somebody else.
Yes, yeah. Wonderful.
We talked about maybe approaching the whistle stop. It's a little, I guess, yeah, it's small, maybe. But since then, I've kind of heard that he has been no interest. And we also discussed doing a co-op, you know, with the harbor. Mainly, of course, the charter fleet and whatnot. And we were surprised that the insurance isn't all that much of it. So, which is a good thing. And all kinds of hinges, kind of hinges on how much the city would be wanting to lease it to us.
Sure.
Other than that, that was, that was pretty much our entire meeting, basically. Yeah, that was a lot of input and everything. We went round and round about it for a while, so.
Sounds like good input and good ideas that maybe something we could pursue.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I have a question, too. Can I ask? Did we get all the captains resituated with reassignments as your questions?
Yes.
Everybody's all happy here.
There is still a few minor issues related to fleets, but Dave was out unfortunately sick most of last week. So, he's working on the final details, but he's making people happy and he's focused primarily on priorities, but yeah.
Did we make the gentleman that was here?
No complaints at this point.
Okay.
I have a question.
We did have a public comment on, somebody was pretty upset about the previous meeting, we had a fellow come in that wanted some kind of refund for having to be relocated or during the, during the restoration. And so, we pretty much said it wasn't our decision or anything. And then we had another lady commenting on that on the last meeting, and she was upset that we didn't have the access for that guy. And it's a kind of a tough thing, but hey, we got an order on it, so. Oh, and then the other thing, too, was the A and B, the guys that installed the docks.
Oh, the A and C, the V and C.
Yeah, A and C, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're coming to redo it, a fleet. And then Dave's going to learn how to, how to do other fleets, fleet relocations, fleets for other folks.
And they're going to do that around the edges.
The fan, in the fasteners.
And fasteners, there's a lot of missing fasteners and broken fasteners and. And then I haven't addressed it yet, but I walked down the docks and dock two's gangway, the top of the lights has a rust on it. And it's already dead. It's like, come on. So, I haven't emailed him about that yet, but I'm going to do that and say, come on. It's not even, and you know, we haven't even had a wear here yet, so.
As you know, it's the winters when that salt starts flying. If it's already rusted now, it's going to be real ugly.
Counselor Beasley has a question, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Mick, I thank you for your service. I have a question about the fuel facility. And I want to hear an answer from your position as a, as a commissioner, from what you've heard, that one of the main complaints that I've listened to from boat owners and read about on social media is that the city doesn't have hours that are conducive to filling the tanks of our charter fleet. And I've heard this over the years. It's been explained to me by skippers a couple of times. But why, in your opinion, is, or in your opinion, is, what does the city need to do to make that harbor facility effective and useful for the charter fleet and other users?
Well, the hours have already expanded to 5:30, which is a huge help. Part of the big problem is when we drop shore trips, our return is until 6 o'clock. And in the past, the harbor master has worked with us and, and has a charge with the user fee in most circumstances. So, hopefully, the same thing happens. The biggest issue right now, counselor, is the, is our silt in the bay. It's, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's over the plus two, plus two or lower tide, boats are just going to get stuck, so. And last week, that was the issue, pretty much during the fueling hours, through the entire meeting. It was a minus high and the tides were right at the right timing for it. That's definitely a huge concern. We've got the next cor想过d engineered dredge in 2026 at the earliest. So, it all, it's all dependent on those tides. But, but getting it open till 5:30, 1 to 5:30 now is a huge, huge help, the, just the two and a half hours that was open before.
And with the parking lot got stripped, install this and show you stripped, that looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was done two years ago, so I think we're looking at a, a starting point, probably covered years and just about $2,000.
What's next? Anything else we can?
But yeah, it was discussed what we could do about getting dredged earlier, and it's pretty much a core thing. And then Ken has had some good contacts with the new core person.
I do have an update that I was going to give you during the project report, and I can tell you right now, I keep like, sure. So, remember, we talked about reaching out to coastal program manager state, I'm going to find out if the city can do that. So, here's your response. While it's possible for the city to dredge the harbor, it requires permits under the Clean Water Section 404, Version Harbors Section 10, and USAC Section 408 involving detailed plans and several months of review. Additionally, the sediment team will collect dredge material samples from the harbor and check dam later this year. So, dredging beforehand will interfere with that crucial characterization, what they're trying to do for 2026. The navigation team is developing a pipeline during the contract, including Deco Bay. Remember, I said that they were trying to combine Deco Bay and Garibaldi. We are aiming for fiscal year 26. It's on the schedule, but they, of course, she follows up, but no guarantees yet. So, it's on the schedule, which just all comes down to whether the president will be funded to do it. They're working on the contract. We can, so the bottom line is, yes, we could try to get it. It's a lot, I don't know what it will cost, and it looked like it's going to take several months to review. Remember how long it took to get the permit for the docks? So, we would not get that done.
And the check dam.
And the check dam. So, if the council wishes me to continue investigating this, I'm happy to do that because, but it's will cost money to investigate, which I had a budgeted for, so I would have to. I was going to say, I'd have to throw more money in the harbor.
It would sound like it would get us there faster.
It's up to a half a minute.
Probably not much, but.
It's up to a half.
Half a minute.
The check dam was only done two years ago, and it's already filled back up again. There's, there's so much more silt coming down South Creek than there ever was before.
And then the other question I asked last time was going up the creek, can we connect with the timber folks and chat with them?
This new, a new harbor commissioner had a very opposing view to that and said we should not be pointing the fingers directly at the timber company, only right now. I would encourage that if you want more information, I can have, I'm in and addressing, but.
He's working on a report.
Huh?
He's going to do a creeper report.
So, in other words, Tab, we're trying really hard to answer all of your questions and.
Well, a lot of people don't realize that.
But there's so many roadblocks, there's so, so much.
A lot of people just don't realize it's a core, core engineer.
Yeah.
That's federal.
It's like I said, can't Dave just get it back on for that stick? And it's the same thing for the seawall, I knew you were going to say the seawall. It's the same thing for repairs to that fence, which I have some serious issue with, that I'm going to try to push them to get that done sooner. But it's all, that is all core. So, we're at their mercy. And I nag as much as I can without making people mad.
Benny has some good ideas. He's our new harbor commissioner, and, you know, he's been watching these creeks for, since he was a little boy.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the salmon and that's them, everything, too, he's, he's on offense.
Yeah, I heard you just said he's working on a report, so.
I'm sure it's going to be real good.
But we could get something coming out of that from him. A possibility.
When Benny speaks, people listen. He's a smart man to listen to because he's very knowledgeable on everything.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Alrighty. And I just believe there's any other committees? Okay, public comments, open the floor for public comments. We want to unfinished business. We have a member, MOU of understanding between the city and the urban renewal. Has everyone had a chance to read this and review it? So, the next step was once the council approved it, I presented to the urban renewal agency, which is made up of you guys anyway, to have them sign off as well. And if you recall, this came up during the budget discussion to just make sure that we're doing this correctly. I have leaned on AI a lot to really help us find new processes, including some memorandums, and this is one, one key one that will keep us out of trouble with the auditors. It's all about keeping this out of trouble with the auditors, to stay in compliance with the law. Is there any motion to accept this motion? It's to approve the resolution, pardon me, here. Oh, I'm sorry, that's okay. To approve the resolution?
I will make a motion to approve the MOU for the reimbursement of the city, Resolution 58625.
Awesome. It's been moved in second to accept the Resolution 58625 regarding the memorandum of understanding. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Thank you for doing that. That's important stuff.
Yes. So, there's a clear understanding of what needs to be done. It really tightens us up. Um, there is no discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alrighty. And just to, just to say, I saw Councilor Beasley's mouth say aye. I have not heard anything from Councilor Rec. But we have a, we have, we have a vote, so. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm watching you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, we have a professional services agreement. The drinking water source, the, so everyone has a chance to review this, the grant that's going on. Ken, you went out of the light this morning. Yeah, so if you recall, it has been some time, because it took a long time to get that agreement signed. We were grant, getting grant funds of 75, 70,000. Well, we haven't received it yet, but we were getting a grant, 70,000, to assist with our drinking water source protection, which is focused on Marico Bakery and Rocket. So, when we originally started this, we had gotten some free technical assistance from Sustainable Northwest. So, they were working on a piece of it, they still are. But once we got the grant, we were able to say, okay, Sustainable Northwest can actually give us these particular tasks related to the grant, which was approved, but they're still doing money on the side. They're still doing work on the side to the EPA. Their portion is only about the 50,000. The rest of it will be covered by the Oregon State University, which I will bring to you in July for the work that they're doing, which part of it is mapping our water sheds, doing a tax law analysis, and even Sustainable Northwest has had conversations with the timber companies. So, they're doing a lot of work, but I think the agreement showed what their, their scope of work and what they will actually be doing. So, which is what the grant was funded for. I did a sole source determination after doing some review. Because they've already been working on it, it didn't make any sense to go out part R and B because they've already been invested. So, we're trying to follow the grant, and everything is about how we can follow the grant, and this is why all this is kind of wrapped with the average. And our, this next step, so what I'm asking you is to do, yes, we're okay with everything that we see. We're going to give you a preapproval. Then this goes to business organ. And if business organ says, oh, we got changes, just, I would bring it back to you. Otherwise, we would sign off with Sustainable Northwest to get going on this. That's all this is doing. So, if there's any significant changes, any, there won't be any money changed. If there's like any significant changes to the grant, I mean, I really don't, they've worked with business organs, so I don't know what business organ will come up with. But if they do come up with that, something that's pretty substantial, I would bring it back to you for your listening. But as it stands now, this is probably what it's going to look like. So, I'm asking for a preapproval to let us move forward.
Kim, could you give me a page number, please, on this?
Can I do what?
A page number and the packet on the.
Oh, 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 hang on a second.
Number 70.
Thank you.
Who's the agreement is? Professional Services Agreement.
Yep, page 69 is the cover letter, the stack part. And then page 70 is the agreement. And all the attachments, including their schedule, compensation schedule, schedule 1.1 is their description of services. And if you look at the brand, it matches exactly the brand, which I have. Of course, I didn't give you the grant, but promise me, if that says their scope of work in here matches exactly what the brand says, our scope of work is for the brand, mine is the OSU piece. I know it's a little bit common. Sounds good, though. Good step in the right way. Is there a motion to accept the professional services agreement as it's presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the professional services of Sustainable Northwest.
Oh, ready, is there a second? It's been moved in second to accept this agreement. Is there any discussion on the motion? Just for clarification and for Gina's purposes, I believe that was Councilor Soffer who seconded? I just, oh. See, we're really quiet. That was Councilor Watson who seconded Gina.
Thank you. Thanks, yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, get that going. Thank you for working on that. And as soon as I hear from business organ either way, I'll probably put it in my project updates report, so you'll never regret. But obviously, if you see it as an action item, then something's changed, but we don't anticipate that. Okay, the Oregon State Marine Board grant agreement for cameras installed, of course. Do you want to lighten this up a little, also? Sure, I'm always going after all the money I can get. And we, Oregon, the Oregon State Marine Board, who has been a strong supporter of our little Deco Bay Harbor, opened up their grant and extended their small government grant and extended how much they would be given, so the pot was bigger. So, we were in the middle of working with Verkata, as you know, to, and to get new security cameras installed. So, as soon as the grant opened up, I needed our grant writers to help us put this grant together. And it was awarded, so we got the grant, and we already paid for some of the cameras, but this grant takes care of the rest of the cameras that we need. Plus, which ends up being eight, nine, ten weeks. 13 cameras, we get 13 cameras, including three live stream, um, which is, which is pretty, we're, we're going to get one on the bridge. Still working on that one, so we're going to be able to switch one over. We were trying to get one on the coast, but we're still waiting to hear. But they have a lot of hoops they want me to jump through, such as doing an archaeology study or a dangerous species. And I'm like, to put a camera on a building? But I haven't heard back yet, and I don't want to spend a lot of money to do that. So, so the grant, the other condition on the grant is it has to be done by the end of June. We got the camera material, all the cameras are here today. We're about ready to have kickoff with the installers to get it in here. And Verkata is used by the Port of Newport, so it's a brilliant system. So, this is just to accept the grant, so that we can sign and get it out there and we can move it.
So, I have a question. So, just ballpark, unless you have exact numbers. So, the total amount of money that we have put into these cameras for the harbor is?
About 44,000.
And that was just, and it was mostly all grants, or?
No, 9,000 of it. Uh, let me phrase this. The way this works, let me back up a little bit. We leave about 8,000 because they do, with grants, they do our force account labor. So, the actual money is the city has paid about 9,600, 500.
495 dollars and 7 cents.
Thank you. It's in my stack for you, and I have a friend of mine. Yeah, so the city actually paid that 9,000 dollars for the first batch of cameras. And they got about 10,000 in there, that's this grant, source account labor. But the actual money, so add the 28,466.06 plus the 9,500, and that's the actual, actual.
So, do we monitor these cameras, or do we just refer to them if there's a problem?
Oh, no, we'll monitor them. Yes, they're going to be.
I want that job.
Yes, that's their job. We don't have to fight with them for it. But we will all have access through the cloud, so.
Okay.
And, and then we will be able to search, like, if somebody, we see somebody, when it's the same boat, hack it on dock two, reports a strange eye and a, not orange, we can tell our guys we're orange, but purple sweatshirt. Um, we can type in purple sweatshirt, and it will search through the camera and find all the people that were wearing a purple sweatshirt. So, we're going to be able to, and you can see faces better. You can actually see, what are the boat numbers called?
The splits?
Yes, the boat numbers. Our numbers, you know, we can see much more detail than we've been able to see with our current cameras. Um, we've already thought of menus that we can make of these harbor cameras, but I'm really excited about the live streaming. So, one of the live streams we're looking at is a boat launch. So, let's say somebody goes to the Oregon State Marine Board, and they want to know what the conditions of our harbor are at that time. Sure, there's other ways they can do it, but then we can actually, we can connect, like, OS and D, put only our cameras on the grid site, so that people will be known and see what's happening at our boat launch, and see the parking lot, and see what they're going to come into before they come into it. So, we think it's going to be a really great thing. And to get that money from the ones who gave everything to us, I'm very excited. I've already got two other grants, request for them. One is to review that parking lot down there, which is a bad need of repair. And the other one, yeah, the boat launch. We're going to eventually do the other side of that, I'm down there. Um, but not this year. Uh, but the, also the maintenance assistance grant for the fuel block field standard. You haven't heard about that yet, but they know where it's in fact, so they still have to be. This one's really exciting. Awesome. Okay, is there a motion to accept the Oregon State Marine Board small grant as presented?
I will make that motion, the Oregon State Marine Board grant agreement, to approve that with the security device we have established.
Second, it's been moved in second to accept the Oregon State Marine Board small grant award of 28,466 dollars and 6 cents as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, aye? Alright, thank you. Uh, we have the intergovernmental agreement. With the, I'm sure this is all just housekeeping. We just need to permission to sign with these, this going. One of the things that just occurred, because we guys, we had that work session, and there was no agreement with schedule, so I did talk to the schedule today. Meaning that one of the things you would want to do is say, do you want that swing schedule? Remember, one we presented was June to 10, and it has to be, I think he said Thursday, it actually has to be the opposite of Casey. So, Casey is Sunday to Wednesday, the open up day would be Wednesday. So, it would be Wednesday to Saturday. So, we have a Sunday coverage, but Wednesday to Saturday would be the swing. So, on Wednesday, we would have a day time activity and a night time activity. And the reason they're trying to keep with that kind of schedule is that's harming you. That's keeping you consistent with all that. Um, so, and that doesn't have to be decided, it's not per the agreement. I talked to Carl, the tender, their insurer, and they're willing to stay with, they want to work with the city, so they're willing to work with whatever schedule can, with whatever they can within the union. And the sheriff said that, that June 10 will be perfect, will work out well.
Does it look like we can get a report in?
They're not, they will not admit to that. They are going to try, that is all they tell me. Because, and we had another new guy today. Remember, he said they were in train, and he did say he wouldn't give us a new guy, but there's still people coming up, so. They don't want to stay, so we have a chance, but. So, this does approve the grant agreement. It doesn't include any scheduling that we can work out with him, and the sheriff said go work on it.
I'd like to move to approve Amendment 1 to the intergovernmental agreement with Lincoln County to provide law enforcement services as provided in the agreement that operates the territory side of the country.
So, second, it's been moved in second to accept the IGA. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
I would like to make a comment. Mayor, I'm going to vote for this motion, but that is mainly to preserve my, my right to bring up and discuss this issue of this expenditure. I come to believe that this is really what the government, federal government, would call a discretionary expenditure. It's a, it's a luxury expenditure. And we are facing tremendous financial pressures. And I just think that this is a mistake, but I will vote for it.
Thank you. Any other discretion?
Hello?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I really think that we should put our agreed on timing into the contract.
No, I don't agree with that, absolutely not.
I think we should express it as a preference of the city, knowing that there needs to be, can I finish my sentence, please? Knowing that there needs to be flexibility. But I would like to say what we all agreed on as, in the work session at least, as if we had this, that we wanted, you know, that afternoon, 3 to 10 time, and we had one day of overlap. And I think it's important to get that in the contract, knowing that, well, we could put words in if possible or whatever. So, it's not, it's not set in stone, but it shows our preference.
I agree with Carter. Yes. And, and the sheriff was coughing. He can say anything, but I'm sure if he disagreed with Kurtner, he would have said something. So, he said, thanks for reaching back out. I do not believe the hours need to be specifically added to the contract. We are going to honor the hours as close to recommended schedule as possible. What we are trying to keep consistent is four 10-hour shifts, even Wednesdays and Wednesdays. What we are trying to keep consistent is four ten-hour shifts, even Wednes- Sunday through Wednesday, or Wednesday through Saturday. That keeps our systems consistent across our patrol team. The twelve to ten PM shouldn't be an issue, as it will be mutually agreeable to the city and the ESO. And I think the ESO is, Sheriff's Office, I'm guessing? Uh, if we put in specific hours and if Mary finds out it doesn't work for whatever reason, we will likely have to go back to renegotiate everything, and that takes time and money. If for some extreme reason in the future both parties are not mutually agreeable to the hours, I think both sides can cancel the contract with the appropriate notice. However, our desire and intention is to work with the city on hours a day to be most beneficial, as long as it's not an extreme hardship for one deputy. Like, we would not agree to a midnight to ten AM because the deputy would be working solo for a period of time, and that is dangerous in their line of work. So, if the council wishes, I can tell them that is a condition, but.
No, no, we can't put that in there. I'm sorry, Brandon, that doesn't make sense. I, I've worked with, um, Parker for, for two years, and I really trust her.
I can't.
I, I trust, I trust, um, the word of his statement, and, um, they will work with us. But I can depend on him. Any other discussion or objection? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who votes? I'm ready. Councilor Reck, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, but the council does need to tell me what schedule you would like them to shoot for.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have an agreement at the work session, so I would like one now, do you have one?
Noon to ten.
So, you go with noon to ten, so, okay?
Yeah.
Is the council all concurrence with noon to ten, with, uh, Wednesday through Saturday? Councilor Beasley, is that okay for a schedule?
Uh, I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
Um, it would be noon to ten on Wednesday through Saturday.
That's for number two officer?
Yes, yes.
That's fine, that sounds good.
Okay, all right, I will move forward with letting the sheriff know once we have a sign that this is what the wish of the council is, to see if they can get to our address, schedule on Friday. Frankly, I could, there could possibly be a swap, 'cause Casey has talked before about doing an afternoon shift. So, we could get a new deputy in the morning, in the daytime, and Casey might be the, the, so it goes, you know, uh, the sheriff said it goes out for bid. So, it goes to the bargaining units, and people, they hit the bid, and they choose based on security and all that stuff, so. But, I think Casey will fight really hard to keep one of those objects concealed while streaming here. Thank you.
Okay, um, Kim, you said there was a work session, and I don't have it in my packet here.
And they base free. Oh, my gosh, it didn't get put in there. Okay, let me, um, if you want to.
Just tell us how much to do.
I will. Hang on a second, I am so sorry, I don't know how to get, get that in there. Hey, even more wrong time. That's, I said that was for Bay Street, right?
Yeah.
It's little, so it's the release of the retainage, so the project is considered complete. It's about sixteen thousand and something, let me tell you exactly. Um, one of the conditions of being able to refund their money is that we had to get their, uh, we had some reports that they didn't pay their subcontractors. In fact, we actually got notices, they didn't pay one contractor. So, in order for them to get this retainage, they had to, um, uh, send us documents, proof, if you will, from each of the subcontractors to say that they got, where is it, it's not in here. All right, it's in my email. I am so sorry, I can't believe I missed putting that in there. For me, number six-three. Why are we doing that? But I also know we'll be getting one next time for, um, a prepayment on, uh, the, the work on the catwalk. They've been doing some work on the catwalk. And then Collins is coming, here we go. My apologies, so.
The catwalk for all of you folks in the audience, because that's the sewer treatment last. I saw us looks there.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that thing, um, and there, it's really ready, it's getting worse and worse, isn't it, Brady?
Yeah, and it's, it's like extreme safety hazard.
Yeah, so, this one is for one thou- sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. We got all of the releases, so AKS said it's good to go. This releases the money that they have in hold, not hold, that's what this does, and it closes the problem.
Anyway, I, I already used.
Sorry, can you say it?
No, you can say it, but no.
Um, is there a motion to accept the retainage release of sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents? I'll make the motion to basically, trainer. Okay. I'll say a second. It's been moved in second to accept the amount of sixteen thousand four forty-one, like, fifty-five, uh, as all the releases are completed. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All righty. Project updates, I just have to tell you, Brady, the city was absolutely beautiful. All the, all the parks are normal, the, everything is striped and looks just beautiful, thank you, it's really nice.
Ready for the summer, tourists.
You wanna tell them that, or you think that?
Yeah. We got the new, I won't, I think I told them last meeting.
Yeah, that was our permission, no, no, we, we just, we don't do it.
So, we gotta do, um, point.
You told, you told Councilor Reck.
Let's see. Anyway, he's, uh, big guy, about six foot eight, and, uh, strong.
His name is Forrest.
Name is Forrest, and, uh, great guy, gets along good chemistry.
Law enforcement. We need same parts.
Um, but he took off, he's, he's maintenance right now, but, uh, he's been working utilities really shut, we had a big water coming break last couple days, and working on it, and, uh, yeah, he's done a really good job, so, we're lucky to get somebody.
We have a lot. Right, we have a lot of access to the utility worker. So, originally, when they met, and they thought, oh, let's start with maintenance, but since he's been in maintenance, he's already shown an affinity for a lot of things, he worked with a lot of, so what we think we're gonna talk about doing is we have a couple candidates that are for maintenance, and one of them has a good, strong, arts background, with master gardener and all this other stuff.
Yeah, so then.
So, we're going to, Brady's gonna interview this gentleman, and if he works out, we will probably look at putting Forrest into the utility position, and let him roll in there, and then hire this guy, so. And my utility billing, not going great, but we got a couple of unusual standards here. So, if we're trying to.
With that, complete your.
It would complete great, except.
Yeah, with, with, yeah.
For the seasonal, if, if you're ready to go, or if the seasons are working on that.
A seasonal, yeah. Right.
Any other, uh, updates?
Oh, I, I do, I'm sorry, guys, I know this is not even an hour, but I'm gonna have to keep you here a little bit longer. Um, some things came after it, so first of all, during the budget discussions, a lot of things were discussed about the work ODOT. Remember, all those submissions and stuff like that? Well, the responses are now starting to trickle in. So, this is the response I got from, Gina's been mad at Gina's, I got it from, she forwarded to me. Um, this was about the, uh, utility pole missile. This is about those issues. As the poles, this is the district four office that handles utility permitting. As the poles placement was compliant at the time of installation, utility relocation within the ODOT right-of-way is only mandated when necessitated by highway projects design. If the city is interested in pursuing this independently and is willing to fund the relocation, we can work with you and the utility company to issue the necessary permits and ensure everything meets current ODOT standards. So, as I've been saying, sure, they'll do it, but we'll have to pay for it, and, um, it's, it wasn't actually, this wasn't funded at all, the budget, or we don't think if it wasn't funded, but if the council wishes this to be pursued, I can try to get cost estimates on it, but it's, it's gonna be, and we got the estimate for putting PUD lines on the ground, so. I don't imagine it's gonna be that much to move a pole, but, yeah, but you guys have a notice. So, that was the response on one of it, I will be trickling these in with you. Um, I did also want to let you know that the, uh, OEM, no, the Oregon Department of Energy, announced their grant openings. Remember, we talked about the community real energy grant, we just got the planning grant, we got the final report. Uh, while they opened the grounds, the next round, and this is what they wanna look at for the construction piece of it. Um, it opened, there's an extra, I guess it's grant and an extra twelve million dollars in the back, the, the, the thing, that's pretty good, I missed one, there's another date. But the grant is opening, but that is not very open very long, I think it's open till about middle of August, I think.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Um, um, Mr. Cannon can provide the dates if you wanna know, but anyway, it's not open very long. So, what needs to happen beside this really long checklist, um, is the council needs to be, to decide, do you wanna move forward with the design, with what they wanna do, making sure you understand everything that they wanna do, and do you wanna move forward with applying for that grant? I will be asking Adam, who will probably handle this for us, because we may have to put some funds, so when I bring the budget back to him on the seventeenth, we may have to put some funds in there to, we can't, can't expect Adam to do this amount of work without giving them some money. So, but I don't know what it's gonna be, but I'm waiting to find out. So, I will give you an update on the seventeenth, but sometime soon-ish, you're gonna wanna have a work session to decide if you wanna move forward with this. Um, so that's one, one reason for a work session. Um, we also need to talk, uh, I'm losing nine, hang on a second, I hope you can hear a minute. Um, the joint work session with the harbor commission scheduled for June eleventh. It was fine before the planning commission had to put, take the meeting date back. So, the planning commission is meeting at six, so the harbor commission, I talked to the chair today, she wants to do it at four. She thinks they're gonna need at least an hour and a half to discuss the fueling options and the things the council wants to address. So, it's, it's been changed to four here at City Hall. We tr- they tried to get it at the community hall, but of course, the community hall's booked that day. In fact, it's booked most of next week, with the exception of two days, so, month, June is very, could be a lot of people there. Um, I wanted to let you know that there was a fall on dock one, um, due to the, you know, the rubber rust, uh, that, that dock connectors, anyway. The, um, apparently, looking from the pictures, and I went down with myself, the rubber's curling, and there's places where it looks like screws have been missing for a long time, but also, because of the movement, screws are coming up and going down. So, some of those screws are raised this high. Uh, so, we looked at it, I walked down there with Mr. Minnick, and we looked at it, and I reached out to PND. This is, and I told him this is not part of the dock harbor two-three-four project, but I asked him to see if there was anything that they, we, I don't know who else to ask a question besides my doc, so. There, I'm gonna send them some information tomorrow, but they think they might have a solution for this, uh, but I'm not sure what it is. But they, we passed the information on to CIS, however, they actually, they had not actually filed a complaint. Uh, but they sent me an email and said, uh, or they sent an email saying that my, his, his father's still fell, and he did get injured. So, um, I responded today saying, so sorry, I gave him the link to the cleaning office, the CIS, so they could tell I'm coming forward if they need to follow us. So, um, they reported that this issue has been ongoing, but I have not ever heard of it, we either did cars, so, but now we know we have to do it.
So, where was it on dock one?
Um, it was the.
In between where the docks come together, there's a rubber flap that covers a little bit of transition for the two docks.
We have a dock. Yeah. And I forgot exactly where it's all the way.
It's not the two animals was down there, hold on?
Maybe.
Yeah, since what, two thousand and one?
I mean, he caught his foot on the rubber flap and fell.
So, you're talking about the top part?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He didn't fall in the park. No, but it just sounded like it felt pretty hard, um, sustained some injuries on that, so. But we're, we're jumped on it to see what we can do, um, and see what PND thinks is a good option for it. It's positive that they already think they have some, so, but it is, so. Um, I have a reason for work session, and I can't tell you what it is.
Can I ask?
Question, mayor.
Mr. Minnick, is four o'clock gonna work for your folks?
Yeah.
There's no vote quote, meaning that none of them are our votes, none of the harbor commissioners are vote people.
Oh, this is just commissioners, so it's not even up to the publics?
Well, the public, it's a public meeting, the public is welcome to attend.
So, I know they all like to.
But, but, you know, if, if, if the joint, the chairs of the joint meeting allow public comment, that's one thing, but the public can always attend the meeting. But work sessions generally, as you know, aren't open to the public to make comment, um, but we don't choose to do that, so.
That's gonna be the harbor commission reporting back to us, with me?
That's a work, it's a session. And right, it's a.
Yeah. Well, is that correct?
The, the, the direction from the council was kind of twofold. One, they have, have their meeting with the charter captains and decide, look at the fueling options. And then we're gonna come back to the council with a report of what that would look like. So, that's part of what they're doing, but the second part was to bridge the, to look at how the harbor can be more self-sustained. Especially, that's kind of it, and that's how, how can the harbor be more self-sustained? Options are in the harbor, future fate, which we will rather report on that, so that's one of the options. Um, there's other options, you know, that, uh, I, I, I told somebody one, but I was like, I can't remember what it is. But anyway, so there's, there, that's that discussion which they were supposed to have with the council. So, nobody in the state can propose with ideas for that, it's just gonna be a discussion about what do we wanna look at, and what do we. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure there was something else I needed to tell you, but that just.
Oh, uh, oh, yes.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Kim, uh, as I understand it, and your, your conversation was slightly garbled, I, uh, so I, I just wanna make sure I understand this, we're gonna be discussing expenses and revenues at this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, could we have a balance sheet on the harbor then, or, uh, for whatever period, uh, you, you deem is appropriate?
Well, let me clarify that, you, you're not discussing expenses, 'cause that's the budget, and that's gonna be adopted, hopefully, on June seventeenth, and you've already approved the budget. What you'll be looking at is revenue, and I will be happy to provide your revenue.
Oh, I think, I think I understand that completely, and I think, uh, we'll be looking at revenues, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
But order to understand how, the, the kind of revenues we need and what is compelling those revenues, we need a balance sheet to see the expenses. I think that these skippers are gonna need some convincing, and it would be absolutely imperative that we go at this meeting with the data in hand, to show why.
I will, I will provide reports that I've provided before, that shows what the revenue and expenditure is, but obviously, it'll be a lot closer, uh, because we had, I think, a month since I recorded the last one, but absolutely.
Well, I think a balance sheet, you know, a computerized, printout, uh, balance sheet would be very helpful for, for all of us. And I, and mayor, if I could say one other thing, and Kim, uh, I noticed on this, uh, report that you mentioned that you haven't had any, uh, an opportunity really to push forward the tourism and marketing promotions, which, you know, that doesn't break my heart, and I understand the tremendous workload that's been put on you and the professional staff with all of these other projects and the budget process. It seems to me that if, uh, we, we, if it's possible at all to reconsider any of this, because so many thousands of dollars are tied up in this tourism marketing promotion, uh, in the sense that, when you mentioned this camera situation, it seems to me that if you put a, a live stream of, you know, you mentioned the, the dock, and then if we had one of the bay, that would be millions of dollars of publicity and drive people to our website, and thus satisfying the, uh, uh, expenditure of money that we have to do without, uh, incurring a lot of, uh, with, you know, outside entities like KATU and, uh, and all of these other, this DMO and so on. We could just, you know, generate millions of hits on our own by doing something like that. So, that was a very good idea, that was your idea, I just wanted to reinforce that.
Okay, any other, uh, project updates?
Seems like there's one on the top of my tongue that needs a work session, but I cannot, I can't, I can't go on here. Well, come to you later. I have come up.
Okay. Um, are there any closely?
Okay. Are there any closing public comments this evening?
Cindy left. She said she was, she had to go. She was going to come back tomorrow.
Oh, she signed something.
Yeah, she signed. I think she was just striking her name from the desk.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I was like, has she signed up and just went down? Um, council comments. I'll make a comment that Immortal Day turned out beautiful, absolutely spectacular. And boy, the crowds were amazing. So I think everything went really well on that. Anybody else with council comments?
Comment. I thought we were going to, because my heart stopped when I read page 115 and 116, that we were going to discuss this 2019-20 audit report. I think we need to have a full council discussion on this and determine whether or not we should have a a special agenda item at our next meeting. This is a, this is a huge red flag for us. And we have to have some kind of plan on writing.
Did you read?
I read every word of it. I read every word of it and it raises a lot of questions for me.
And I. Do you want to address them to our administrator?
Well, now, Mayor, Mayor, please. We as a council need to address this so that the public can be aware of what's happening. We're in trouble here. We're five years without an audit. At the very least, we should be bringing in somebody to self-audit the city for the last year to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. And then we need to have a plan on how to fill in these gaps with the Secretary of State. In fact, I would recommend if we have this agenda item, that we talk about the Secretary of State's involvement with, with our, our problem. And see if there's not a way that we can reconcile this lack of audits and come back into legality. We have to do this, Mayor. I mean, our meeting is gone.
Are we?
Yeah. Say again.
Do you want to address this, Kim, first? Okay, so the corrective action plan is for the 1920 audit. Since I don't know what happened back to back because I wasn't here, I came up with things that we have done since then. So this satisfies the state secretary of state's requirement for this corrective action plan. It can be blessed by the council, but it's not required to be. This, this is, this is a corrective action plan that I've gotten that. Our auditor that we hired, I reached out to her and she's supposed to get back to me, I thought she was going to get back to me to end the month, but the holiday, we cannot follow up with her, to figure out a plan to move forward with the 2021. And once we start doing that, we'll come up with a plan of how this will look for the rest of the audit period. The secretary of state will have no input on this because all they care about is this getting done. We've been out of compliance for so long. We are moving toward compliance. In fact, I was very happy to send this off to them. Unfortunately, it doesn't look good, but it doesn't look good from 1920. Doesn't impact how we look now because if you look at my revenue expenditure report that I provide, the city is financially healthy. It's that good money in the bank. We were looking at profit and loss and talking about the difference in with what we have in the bank versus what we need in budget. We have over a million dollars that is there. So our finances are strong. This report unfortunately, it doesn't look good, but it doesn't look good for 1920. I don't know what 20 and 21, or 21 and 22 will look like. They could have some of these same deficiency of which we are already making a lot of strides as I know need to deal with these issues.
I just want to say that I read every word of it and I was, I went, oh my God, this place is such nice. And I really encourage everybody, this is posted as part of the packet. It's the last page, page 116. It's really long, or I read it all out loud tonight. But it really does go through. Yeah, we had a mess back in 2020. It was ugly. It was horrible. You know, but, but bless staff's heart, we have, we're working through this. We have to put new procedures and everything in place that are going to take careful of this. We know we have a problem. We know we had a big ugly problem. There's no hiding that. In fact, the audit, I think at some point, probably we uploaded.
Yes, the audit and this corrective action report will be put.
I'm surprised I glossed the line before you read it. I can't recall what happened. It's interesting reading. Read the audit and then read, read this too. But we get it. We're working on it. And let's just move on to something more constructive.
Yeah.
Oh, let's, let's definitely move on. Where, where is the audit to be found?
I, I don't know if Gina has it posted yet. I'll double check with Gina.
We've got it.
We've got it. You got it. I sent you back to the last meeting, a separate email with the audit. So this is the second or third time. So you've got it. I mean, I'm assuming you all got my separate email, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So.
Oh, that's right. I remember now. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll double check with Gina tomorrow. I might have forgotten to tell her, but either way, we will get back in this report. I just wanted to show it to you, but.
I can post it tomorrow, Kim. I didn't get that email, so I can post it tomorrow.
I will have you do that in the corrective action plan that we just had tonight. I'll put it in the proper format and then I'll submit it to the secretary of state. And this will make them happy that 1920 is done. But they, we're not the only city that is in this, in this.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, we had some challenges with the past CPA and the past auditor. But now we have a brand new one, so I'm thinking positively and we're going to, I will probably have a great update for you guys next meeting on 2021, 2020, 2021. Good. Any other comments this evening?
Just a question. Were we ever going to get our updated headshots or something else?
I did actually ask Tim about them and I got them. I will not use them. Remember when my lips were a little bad? She did the best she could to overshot that out. So would you like to see them if I host them?
We're thinking anything has to be better than the last.
You, you guys all look really nice. But I didn't, but I will send them to you right by beginning this week so you can say yay, yay.
Okay.
But we all, we all kind of forgot about it. And I think I was looking at someone saying, oh, no, we should go to.
One more question. When is our deadline for the city council or the applications?
June 11th.
June 11th.
And we received three, uh, two silver.
And then we decide at the next.
So on June 17th, you will have the material, obviously, but I'm really charging this on a Thursday schedule. I promised I was going to get this on the Thursday schedule. So you will get their application material, because I normally do. And then we will, then you will decide, you will interview them or decide how you want to do it. And then just do about what we did the last time we did it too. So it's been posted and it's got that there. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.